All right, we'll go ahead and call Zane to order. Before we get too far into the discussion, one of our local celebrities does have a birthday today. I've heard two numbers, I've heard six.
I've heard my friend on my birthday.
Six, I don't know which one's right.
Add those two together. Then you have it right.
What I thought would do is just kind of go through the list that we had from 2017 and kind of just talk about what we accomplished there and what we didn't. And then kind of move into what we want to look at for 2021 to 2024. So our goals list from 2017, the electronic filing system was on there. So so far, we've done two million pages of digitizing that. We still got five or six departments or constitutional offices left they don't participate in as well. Key performance indicators developed, those haven't been developed, that's been mainly internally. Justin and Alex have been going through those and getting that in. New County Steel, we made a attempt to solve a logo situation we didn't really... Everybody knows what they don't like, but nobody knows what it means to be, so... That didn't work out like I wanted. Facility plan, I think we do have a facility plan in place. We picked a location for an administrative building. So we call that, I call that a success as well. Broadband, we do have our agreement in place with broadband. Rails and Trails was on the list and there've been... That's a very long-term goal, we really discussed that, it's been checked off. We have something on there called Open Book Management. We're really talking about transparency and trying to get as much stuff on the website and mainly the cell service citizens who want to kind of look at it. We have little individual reach department, different things we had on there. Think about the comp plan, we did do a comp plan up there, I think that was successful. Reduction building plan in detail. It's kind of real, a huge overhaul of building plan and stuff. A lot has gone on with that. Technology was a success as well with the new software being implemented. Building code standards updated, quality, safety. We had very much with the building codes. Took a look at the NRCS review in-house and turned that, it's not feasible for a government high size. And we're just kind of left that one after looking at it, wasn't going to be worth it. And then we had a property maintenance code, if you remember, last meeting we had somebody come up and mention that. We really didn't take a hard look at it, but that's something that's been on citizens' minds since I've been on the commission as well. We did, in finance, we did fiscal policy update, recording cycles, we kind of incorporated in fiscal policy. We did a real big change to our budget process. And it keeps changing every year, it's going to be a big change. Tourism, we talked about doing CBV investigation, the social society, add tourism and possibly helping tournaments. But really, we get the bit of a period of what's created in this last 20 years. That was a success there, so a lot of these other things will fall into different areas in the future. Fleet maintenance, we're looking, talked about maybe doing some technology there with keeping up with model and stuff. Look into that financially, if it wasn't worth doing, it's what a beginning we might have had. We had some technology upgrades and policy integration for human resources. If you remember, we did update the human resource policy. Talked about communications and policy compliance. Civic Center, we investigated through Civic Center, green parking. We really didn't get into that, there's some additional forms from these, so that's one thing that popped up in that discussion. Facility operation, I work over the desk. That kind of got incorporated into our KPIs. I think the utilization of the facilities they program that we talked to here, we got to carefully improve. Economic development, we talked about tax base, certification, documentation. Next, we talked about IDA development, economic development plans. As you know, we kind of changed our structure and that is now outsourced to change the economy. We mentioned technology, we talked about facility, implementing work orders there. We did do a policy update on the IT policy and laboring technology in other areas. Forgot to say we were successful in all those. Property appraisal, technology, that was having the iPad go into the field and helping. Plan to build in Chalmers with that, under the use of the KPIs and KPIs, we sort of keep performance indicators. We had animal control, we talked about facility improvements, SOP development improved and a name, a uniform name. All of that was accomplished, no longer called Animal Control, it's Animal Services. Success in all of this as well. Public work, we had some policy updates that kind of came through. We did accomplish a countywide transportation plan. If you remember, we're also looking at maybe possibly doing a sheriff's office firing range out of Farmington. As we look at that, to meet the code sections that we have in our UDC, it's just going to be, the cost's going to be too high to match that. So that's kind of, it's just careful what you got to pick up. Fire DMA, we get, talk about property division, kind of changing the ore chart, that's done and completed. Technology. Can't exactly remember what we're looking for there. Oh, that's firehouse, getting it into the rock service, that's definitely checked off. Fire inspections, we did have a fire marshal in place and doing fire inspections. Before county our size, we were running out of game, we didn't seem able to start doing that. Fire protection agents. Parks and Rec, we talked about the engineer for the field completion, we've done. Talked about organization structure, financial models for you. Talked about master plan and the BOE is going to use. We did read, joint use plan with BOE hasn't been redone. We did not get to the master plan, but it's good off. In the senior center, we talked about integration with Parks and Rec. There was some of that looked at and found a lot of humbles and a lot of extra stuff to do. Any questions, comments, or emotions out there coming in? Right now, we'll look at for the county goals from 2021 to 2024. Would you like us to continue?
I do think though, you know, with all the things that you said, there are a lot of others, you know, the capital issues and the purchase of the property down where the sewer plant site, the system here and O B A. The addition over here to the big fields, Mulley Perkins Fields, Bogart Library. We've got the courthouse issue resolved, I think, with that new space. So I think there's a lot of others too that I think really probably grabbed the public's eye even quicker than a lot of internal stuff that we did.
The number of 2021 to 2024, I'd like to continue on with the document scanning project, get that completed. That's been very successful. You talked with Kathy, she was one of the first ones to do it, that's been a huge help for her and her residents. I think anybody who got on the program, it's really liked. Finalize our key performance indicator metrics and also start finishing quarterly reports. So I think this is where we start financing and operation. Find out what items, if we measure on a monthly, quarterly basis, we can kind of see trends and make adjustments that we need to. I'd like to leave county logo on there, just to tell you another swing at it. Am I sure how to do that? If we can accomplish it, but I feel like leaving it on there. I think that'd be fun to kind of change, to get something that represents our county game. I'd like the North High Shores kind of change their logo up, they got something really captured the city and really need to have.
Mr. Chairman, we ever thought about doing like a community competition?
Yeah, we could.
We've got a lot of artistic people in our community. They, you know, instead of paying a consultant money to come up with a logo, maybe have a little competition among the citizens.
Yeah, we have kind of talked about it internally, I think that's kind of the way to go is, you know, let people bring it in. Kind of make it a fun, fun thing to do for the entire community, get by.
Should we go back to the document scanning?
Yes.
You said we've done two million pages so far. You talked about the number of departments, but can you equate that to pages?
How many's left?
Yeah.
Do you have an estimate?
An estimate for number of pages?
Yes.
So that would be almost impossible to determine without going through the process. So if you'd like to do a little bit, a quick explanation for the process. There's a retention policy that's statewide that the county's policy references. And what we do is we go into the department and we make sure that their retention policy is, in terms of what documents they're going to keep, are in line with that policy. And then we scan the documents that need to be kept according to that policy. And so until each department has gone through and actually siphoned off the ones that are no longer necessary to be kept, it's almost impossible to determine how many pages are left. So, no, there's no solid estimate for the number of pages remaining.
Probably almost that major. We hit, talking to the probate court yesterday, a lot of their retention policy is forever, so.
I'm going to ask this, do we have a document destruction policy to go along with it?
We do, yes. Okay. So once it hits that limit, then there's a affidavit that's filled out and says, I'm destroying these records, this is in compliance with. And then we send that to destruction, y'all still have a problem. Facility plan, that's executing what we have out there. So the administrative building will be top on the list. We expect a decision from library board by the end of the month. We're trying to schedule a meeting within the next two weeks to kind of do the final vote. Presentation's made to library board Monday evening. They're going to kind of digest that, maybe put questions out ahead and then make a final decision. Maintenance of our current buildings. We've had a reserve study down on all our buildings and kind of know what year everything was installed and when life cycle management can kind of start on those, taking care of what we got. And then, once we complete the administrative building, we'll have to surplus and repurpose the buildings that we checked. That'll be something for us to try to accomplish. Broadband, project execution, as you know, we have the contract in place. I think the engineering and action plan or implementation plan is being developed now. So hopefully, very shortly, we'll have that presented to us for adoption. Everybody kind of know when they're going to have the internet at that house.
Mr. Chairman, go back to the administrative building. Soon as we find out the library board, if they go out there to water the park, are we going to engage in getting that different model made?
Yes, and that's kind of what we're waiting on. So hopefully, about in the next few weeks, we'll have some kind of action plan. What the steps are for us to start with the government, whether it's architect or space planner first. And then kind of have a general timeline for what we think it will take to get to that. We really can't go too much into design until we know who's going to do this.
Could I ask you a question on the facility plan? I know you're going, so I'm kind of a little behind.
No, you're good.
When you talk about surplus and repurpose and vacay buildings, are you talking about those that may happen as a result of moving the administration, to the new administration building?
Yes.
Okay, who's going to be on that, who's going to be tasked with that job to determine that?
Well, that's ultimately our decision. So what will happen is it'll be a recommendation made back from Justin and I. So here's what we think needs to happen with this building. And then we'll discuss it and then make a decision on what we think. You got any ideas? We definitely open to them. So we know library is going to be, the building that's left. The war building right next to courthouse, board elections office and the AMX. All will be available for either repurpose or surplus.
So those are anticipated vacay buildings?
That's right.
So do we have any currently out, I'm not aware, do we have any vacay buildings right now?
There's a whole house of LES that nobody knows what's in that. There's no vacay building. Any questions on broadband? Say it over. That's right. Rails and Trails, I'd like to leave it on there again, that's a very long-term project. It may or may not happen in our lifetime. Two things that would be, that's a lot to go and worthy one, I think, for our community to try to make happen, it's all possible.
One question, is that still kind of in your office or is it assigned to someone?
Rails and Trails?
Yeah, that project is, I mean, somebody getting up there every morning and said, "That's..."
No, not yet, not yet. What we do, we have conversations with my office about kind of what the next step is. And there's been, there's been a lot of activity and stuff going on with that rail line over the last two years. We're just trying to find the right opportunity to take the next step. Just a lot of things that happened with ownership. Next one I have is operational efficiency review. So we're trying to, we want to maximize our software capability and workflow efficiency maximization. As you know, we have a new software installed for DSNA. So we've been operating that coming up on two years now, if I'm right. So now it's kind of time to go back and take a look at what the system does and what we'd like it to do, if I had it to do that. Make sure we're using that technology to develop that capability that it has. And also just kind of take a look at how it workflows through the entire organization. Duplicate some actions here, there's ways to streamline. Hopefully, we can get to a point, you know, right now, Adam and Boris is probably one of the hardest things a department has faced is getting justification for Adam and Boris right now. We want to get to a point where there's an objective review of what's going on. So somebody goes in and looks at the department and says, "Yeah, they actually need two people in this." You know, if we change, need to take processes and think globalized. And that's going to tie it back to our key performance indicator.
I think if you want to have a lot of questions, I guess it's not mutual block. Now, this workflow efficiency, will that include the constitutional officers or just what's under the, outside of the constitutional office?
Yes, but what we're talking about here, this will be just for government authority operations. Now, we get, we want to develop a plan for them as well, a fair across-the-board book, that's going to come out and add. So if we develop, we want to develop a policy where when you come for an employee, you've got to go through these steps with the constitutional officer or where you're employed. That's where we're at. But they will have some, some things you should jump through. It's hard for us to judge, we're not in trenches every day. But it's just so, every time you had a head, it's very expensive just to reach. That's our biggest challenge every year, is looking for something else. Feast loss investigation, we kind of talked about this on and off throughout the last four years. We had, we've got about 71 miles of road right now that need to be addressed. Or the median motor speed, I think this has a rate of, so that's 18 to 21 million dollars depending on what kind of shape the road is. And each year, we have increased general fund support going toward public work. That's a huge number for me, for 18 million. Lowest number I think we would bring in, there's certain things that don't get, the feast loss tax, one of the motor fuels. You don't get the 1% off if you go to feast loss. So I think the minimum we would bring in for five-year feast loss would be about 30 million. That number is probably higher, we'll have to, we'll go in and do a deep dive and make everybody know that, everybody's taking the next steps, kind of look at that.
Well, it seems like that year, I mean, we're, we're nowhere short. So it seems like there needs to be some discussion. You say investigation, at least discussion, move forward and see if it fits what you want, that's for sure because that's what it goes by. So, I mean, we're short here, so, I mean, it's something we need to really dig into, do harder than we should. And if we can get it, I mean, if we can get it, but, and just know the number itself, is it 30 cent, a 10 cent payout? Is it only a nominee? Is there a fact that money gets paid?
No, no, if you did the regional feast loss, then your match for L M dropped to 10% versus 30%.
Since we're a rate company or anything?
Yeah, a single county does not get that much. They were trying to get regions to do it. There's no cost saving there. Just to overcome what we've got to do to get kind of called back to it. And then we'll be working. Our goal, ultimate goal should be to hit 20 miles a day. We're doing the rest in senior now, so we've got to work together. Then community engagement and expansion of potential task force areas. Well, community engagement is kind of one thing we, this board's always been trying to get more involvement from our citizens. We want to continue to do that, so any idea we've got, note as well. We think having task force versus standing community with no direction is kind of the way to go. We see areas where we can get, raise some, group of citizens together for a while and go through a problem and kind of figure it out.
We'll quit, continue to have rezon applications, we'll have a lot of communities doing that.
And I think we'll probably keep doing that. Problem with that is not able to leave that anymore. And then the other thing, the last thing I had on here was prioritization of our SLOSS 2021 project. So it kind of gives us and the community an idea of when things are going to happen. It also helps us prioritize the collections that will come in. So we know if we, as we move forward for the administrative building, well, that chunk of money's got to go first. And then we can roll out, and then serve what's second in line, third in line, as the funding comes in, but we'll check it off. I just think that's good for the community, it's good for me to help manage my expectations. Keep that on the front, man. Plane code for, really, every song is going to have the KPI managed under it. Also during this next four years, it'll be our five-year, it seems like we just did the comp land with a five-year update we do during this next time period as well. House Bill 493, local adoption, I'll go ahead and tell you, that's last legislative session. They passed House Bill 493, which allows contractors to go to their engineering firms to do inspection and that type of thing. And we've gone to an outsourced inspection company lately, so... Where I'm headed with this, I think we should get out of the inspection business, basically. Kind of dock what the state has set up and allow, when you come in to do a project, you have to hire an engineer to check up, do your inspections and check off on that sign off. And then it's his license that's on the line and something that, you recourse if the citizen, that engineer, firms. Approval and everything is for you.
So this House Bill 493, I appreciate that for every county that participates in this, those that make the side.
Every county has certain conditions where they can exercise that right. So I'm just, I'm saying we're going to bring it in, what I'd say is us bring it in as a county. You just go ahead, turn this over to private sector. You come to see us, we want your permit. I was going down there and checking that your journey's correct and that your plans match with other the conditions of our calling here. When you go and build it, when you come back to us and show us, here's an engineer signing off on your footings and electrical and all that, and we give you a C L if everything matches. You don't come see us twice, you're not calling us for inspection. You know, we get a lot of phone calls about inspectors and what's happening there. So we have, I think the law, the state law says a county would have a list of qualified engineer firms. So we figure out some way, some requirement there and they can submit that, they could be on our list. So if you came in as an individual, if it's a professional, if it's an engineer firm, that's a good thing.
I guess probably the key, jurisdiction would be there?
No, we would be reading the layup.
States could do that.
Well, states don't really get involved in any of this stuff.
Well, we do. What I'm saying is here that the law in my house, the state's out there, everyone's going to call in to this.
No, I mean, in your, the now, so if I'm building my house and I go to guys and say, "I need my house inspected," if I can't respond, if a guy can't respond in a certain amount of time, I just call somebody else to come inspect it for me.
Yeah, what I'm saying is, are there other places where you've got an idea of doing that for a sale? If they're thinking about passing the law to how, you know, that's what it is.
That wasn't what their intent was. Their intent was to speed up the process for the development. So if we're, we're doing inspections in-house, if they came in and, you know, we had 10 footy inspections that day and it was going to be another two days before we could get out there, they don't want that developer sitting waiting two days to get the inspection. So they're giving him an offer that... Two days is a long time to wait. I think it's 24 or 48 dollars?
48, but we leave the place.
Yeah, it's not really impacting us now, I just think it's a cleaner way to operate.
To answer your question, this place is a number of our permits. So it's, you know, this is a degree of oversight within the department in terms of, is an option. It's going to become the policy choice of the way we do it. I can give you a long list of present columns on both sides of the place. I don't have a present column on both sides of it.
I just think it's a cleaner way to do it. Putting it back on the private sector, you've got to engineer checking off. Right now, if our inspector goes out and misses something, there's no recourse. Back to them. Just talking, if something like that happened, we have engineer sign on this, I love it. Avenue for recourse. And then you just, manpower is such an issue, even for the companies we have, we sell contracts. One day you may have this inspector come, and then the next inspection may be another inspector. The way he sees, and give that maybe different. So number again.
So is this predicated on the state adopting this House Bill?
That's where, when that, when that bill got, went through and got signed, I'd like, we ought to do this all the way through. So that's kind of what I'm.
So it had to adopt these I B I programs?
Okay. So we would be taking that framework without put four ninety-three and applying it to operations. I'm not doing a good job with explaining.
All right, President, of course, we're time planning on this, is something coming up in the next ninety days, six months, a year?
Yeah, I think it would be in the next, within, within the first board may get the first rough case.
Forty-four.
We're gonna, we'll take that in front of you, that's a pretty significant policy direction. We're not just gonna, we're not just trying to be rolled back. So we've got to do a deep dive on the staff, but we'll put it in front of you, we'll make a recommendation, you guys say.
We'd write, we'd write new groups, long-term, new groups. They have, they wouldn't make that. We've got some community checking, most of the bodies have been arrested.
I mean, they're just going to put somebody in the tank, and they don't have somebody that's come to all their work. I'm not, same person. And I guess we haven't had that in-house before they could go forward, anybody that time she from the perspective. I mean, how did they, our plan for this? I know that we definitely got that.
An outsourced.
Yeah, we're outsourcing this inspection project. We would not be hiring somebody else if they were, they would be, individual contracting would be hiring.
That's more than, uh, through, uh, through the script.
Yes. And that's underneath the, you know. And then I'm, I'm leaving property maintenance gate on here. I can be, I can walk inside and paint some days.
I think the problem is, I mean, this bird showed up in the last meeting, she's, uh, you become her best friend. And, uh, so, so how often does this come up? The issues like she had, I mean, that wouldn't be a help.
Yeah, that's not, he comes up a good bit, especially some of the folks, so like, the neighborhood I grew up in, basically, probably seventy-five percent of them are, and there's different levels of rainbows and, so. You can drive through there one day and you'll see the tannin dead and somebody's rider out in the driveway. Trash all piled up on the front door, we don't have mechanisms to deal with. So I, I think we did need to address that, especially to, you know, commercial shopping centers. You can end up with, I hadn't seen them out here, but, you know, jurisdictions, you'll see pop poles being closed by. Need some mechanism, kind of, to protect them. The other side of that is, you know, a neighbor gets mad, another one starts coming every time, aggressive, yeah, and stuff too. So we've got to find a way to balance all of that out. Respecting property rights, but also we might have the conditions that a definite amount of you laboring, maybe the property labor.
To answer your question, property maintenance, so that's a lot of factor, do you change your preference? That, that really would be, would be the handle on that, on the land one time.
So it wasn't a half-bird, it was just, there's, there's too much, but I get a call and, uh, you need to come look at what's there to do with, making my house. And a lot of times the crew would do it properly.
What's the process now?
Where they call, go to fourth and then go out and ask them to clean it up or whatever, but if it's, if it's a landlord issue, some of them leave investigated, you can't even find the landlord. They're out of state, no way to get through them, so then there's no mechanism, mechanism to pass that today. But I think it's in our, it's really helping some of our ownership. Generate a lot of, give you some, and engagement, we're probably getting a lot of engagement there. Some people, we can have do that. The neighbors, you know, different zoning areas, you have different type of, type areas.
Maybe we'll just take it, take it as home, basically, take care of the whole lot.
They should, but that's another, you know, they may, instead of homeowner association handles, they may not follow us, so take care of it for our house.
Not a homeowner association, it's just not, they don't run the process well. If we will become the tool of each other.
It's possible, we have, so we have to spread through the way, you know, but it's just, there's, there's something, we need something, but I'm not sure, uh, if we don't, we don't want to trip ourselves up too much.
Also, I would say to you, there's, there's outside, you have to use it on the inside. That's, I see. I, I probably, I'm worried, so, uh, because I, I've got, you know, house owners, there's another, there's inside, there's maintenance guy who, who, like, I'm in the face. How quick, you know, we've got the small city, the one mission, these are the health departments, you know, you know, there's large.
Some of these, I mean, I think in some jurisdictions in the metro area, you have to register as a landlord and every time that thing changes hands, somebody goes in, you expect for stuff like this, something holding them all. So there's, there's a wide range of options here.
There, there are some jurisdictions that when a property changes ownership or a new tenant moves in, they're requiring inspection, if things are not decoded, they're requiring to bring it up decoded, and you can go pretty far with this.
Man, I do think it's a problem in some of our ownership.
And there's narratives that this net, it's cast pretty wide.
All right, the finance will, uh, K P I management, again, budget execution efficiency, they'll tie a lot back into the K P I's, but, uh, having things flow smoothly there. Budget process continuous improvement, we'll talk a little bit about the budget schedule this year, shorten here in a little bit. That's one of our, that's our most important, important policy statement every year. So the easier we make that for everybody and give communication through, whatever. Uh, it's been, we'll probably take a physical policy review as well, it's been, we've made some very significant changes about four years ago, so we can kind of go back and look at some of our data man, say, make sure our levels are, you know, pinwells are correct, if any other changes. Attorney's Bureau, what I have here is just store structures and maintenance and operation partnership. So the historic structures have kind of moved around, they were counting facilities for a while, it's got into Parks and Rec and now they're halfway in facilities there. We have a reserve study, I think at our next meeting you'll see a bid coming in to be awarded to, to get the foundations and stuff corrected on a couple of our historic buildings. And there are some additional improvements that need to be made to make sure these structures last for the next generation. We definitely want to do that. But there's also the, we and Daniel House and the old school house out of areas part of it. What's the next step to that? And there's been talk in time, in past about using that for a B N U type of thing. And we really don't have, Parks and Rec doesn't have that, that's not, they're really, they're comfortable to, to manage that, so if we can get a partnership going and help, let them figure out how to best use some of these historic, uh, historic structures and we'll have, we'll handle the maintenance part of it if they can handle the operation. Just trying to get some creative, creativity and get these buildings open to us so people can be going. And the fleet maintenance, again, K P I management, fleet efficiency, that process is just a lot smoother now. Basically, fleet handles the fleet, they, they turn around, car gets rolled out, and then one comes in and two gets, what is here? It's based on metrics and working noise moves, so our fleet's brought in the best shape that's been in one kind of. I think just what we do this year, we'll be in very, very good shape. Uh, human resources, K P I man, K P I management, again, employee communications and then training enhancement. We're trying to get the right way to get, get information out to our employees. It's always a challenge, just like at home, communicating with staff. I think you said that. Even with, uh, the equity adjustment that we did, the summer boys, if they didn't know that had happened, so they got a check stub. So figuring out how to get that information out on the best way. And then training enhancement, maybe looking at some standardized modules for folks to go through and even specific for departments, just enhancing our, our training.
And I'll say this is what kind of one of my priorities, I know Carl Vincent, when I was a young lad, kind of, uh, Carl Vincent had a program where they kind of have like a different modules and training to take people through the frontline and just give you some of the skills from the, from the outside to, uh, as I said, to move through the organization supporting to develop the next generation of leaders within, within the town.
Service center, again, the K P I management and then new service center, I'm leaving it on there, that's a very long-term goal. As noted, who knows when they hit the lottery or something, be able to do it. We keep that in the back of our mind as we move forward, we come across a location that works or something, a building comes available that could be refurbished or something, I think that's a good, a good thing to keep in mind. I think Sean turned a lot of folks away, wanting to use it, and then, as you know, parking, depending on time of day or something, parking can be an issue out there.
You know, one of the things I'd like to suggest, what do you think about it? You know, is it, I mean, I think, I think there, there does need to be some, a book whether we can make something happen, you know, but at least explore the maybe a small committee or the, the Sean. So the actual data that they are about where our efficiencies are, it's really, you know, I mean, it looks really good what they, what they're doing, but the, the large work, but I do know that they turn a lot of folks away. And, uh, and, you know, I would like to look at, you know, make sure it's on, you know, the, the book that, uh, we know what our efficiency is on and they use, how it's used. Because I, I don't think it's going to slow down. And, you know, and if that's what the folks want, I mean, that's another issue with whether our people, you know, they can either have something, whether it's, you know, something, you know, out there. But I, I do think that a lot of people are turning down, you know, coming to county folks. With, with the chamber, that's a hard time, sitting with their membership, I think that's kind of a, anyway, that's just.
That's gonna be a good task, most of the time.
Let me say this too, every time I go in there, you know, I'll pass, depending on where I come to go, I pass the plaque that's on there. You know, there were the committee, and I think if, you know, you get a diverse committee looking at it, uh, where, you know, the issues are, put them out on the, and I do think, and probably needs to be supportive no matter what we do, whether or not they even want to have a new citizen, or whatever you call it.
Facility and operations, uh, being K P I management, reserve study execution. There's a lot of, a lot of improvements to the building, or upgrades to the building have been incorporated in our SLOSS twenty, twenty-one as well, so, so funding's there for a lot of that. And then facility improvement, project management. So in the past, each department was kind of left to kind of run the building project. If you don't do it every day, it's, it's quite a task, that's what I'm saying. We're going to push that on Bobby and let him, use his expertise to kind of keep it going. Let them be more involved or funny as well, to make sure that things are getting more correction. I tell you, we'll continue with K P I management and life cycle management of our computers and we, we're in pretty good shape there now. It's one of the things that's kind of behind when first came in, so they've done a real good job of getting this called out. We're running a good scheduling now, good stuff placed in the new gear play. Uh, G I S maximizes the capabilities to fly over, we do have a flyover schedule, or fix and be scheduled sometime before the trees come back out. It's going to be really neat, a lot better visual stuff, including the light ours, well, and the poverty stuff, so we're going to be in good shape there. G I S has a lot of capabilities and I'm not sure we're, we're maximizing that. Remember even nine-one-one upgrades are coming, uh, G I S is working really a lot of ways to get some of the stuff on the system that wasn't in the past, fire hydrants, we have a layer in G I S that has location on our fire hydrant. And now that'll be on screen for the dispatchers to see, and when they finish that up there, I'll see a question, for the people's sake. Economic development, that's really in chambers, uh, wheelhouse now, we do have the final presentation to do at some point, just to kind of adopt the plan that came from the economic development task force officially adopted. They're still working toward everything on there, to give them some legs to stand on, we really need to bring them there, to get folks. Property appraisal will be K P I management. Animal services will be K P I management and then finishing the building upgrades and getting the, that's why well into what it did, and now they're again, looks a lot different than it did before. We're real excited to get that building, in the right kind of shape. We're real excited to get that building in the right kind of state. Forest Works also has KPI management, road, rotating plan development, landfill and collection site improvements, we've already addressed some of that, but there's still some other opportunities that are being investigated as well. And then EGA partnership, that's really with the school of engineering. We are hoping to have a project with the spring class, spring semester, with that class looking Union Church all the way to Buckwurst Cross and coming up with ideas on how to improve traffic flow there. If we can get, continue to get products in that pipeline, that'll be a little help for us kind of figure out how to address some of our problems that we have. Road paving development. The expensive is road paving is now, they're getting close to 250, 260 mile an hour. Going back and looking at what we're doing and coming up with criteria on what processes are used on what roads. Road ranking. Maybe to look at bringing in somebody to go through and rank the roads. You want to handle that one, what they would do?
Yeah, I mean, there's, for lack of a better term, bringing in a laser truck may just run over the entirety of our road network and you could pretty deep penetration, I think, unlike on other things. And what it is, we would get, we would get this firm to essentially give a PQI, payment quality index of all the roads. Board of Commissioners would establish here what our minimum threshold that we want to achieve, seventy for, for the number. And then it's simply a matter of just ranking everything and then we just fund it and we pick off the list as it goes. But then we would ask for recommendations. We should do full depth reclamation here, we should do minor amendment on this to give sort of this third-party look and give a road, road map like, sorry, for, you know, for the entirety of the paving. So then it's really just a matter of this board allocating every fiscal year to what we're going to mop up. We publish it so we can get the question from citizens, when's my road going to be taken, here you are right on this list. And so it helps with the transparency of it too.
And that may help T-Slot as well, she can see.
We had the numbers. I'm glad you brought that up, but, you know, I'm just guessing, you know, if we do 10 miles a year out of the 71, there are roads, as soon as we start those 10 miles that are going to be added to the list. So it's like, as Mark and I have said many times, you know, if we had $20 million a year, we could, we could let it go and it'd be gone, take the roads and fix it. But I think any data we can get.
Well, it tells the story for a T-Slot company and without thinking, I have a heart, I only recommend a pretty substantial, if not maybe even 50% of a T-Slot be dedicated to this. But I think that data going in on the front end, if you understand what, get your arms on the magnitude of the problem from an outside engineering perspective, I think would be very beneficial. And if that, if citizens understand, here's what the funding would go for, here's the degree of the issue. And the, the problem isn't, can't be addressed by cutting a few travel and training budgets with the substantial one.
EV and fire, KPI management again, SLOSS 2021 implementation. Fire did a good job of kind of doing their strategic plan with the SLOSS, so a lot of things they're trying to accomplish is the strategic plan there. Facility emergency planning and staff training, just in the world we live in now, you know, evacuation plans and something goofy happens, but our boys kind of knows what needs to happen and that, the alarm sounds, if you hear this is going on, knowing what to do. So I hope that you can make kind of a couple of those plans, get them trained there. Parks and Rec, KPI management. Again, SLOSS kind of talks about a lot of her strategic stuff, which is 10 score expansion, OVP entrance improvement, and a master plan update. And then mine, 1001 Prince Avenue, anybody know where that's at? So this summer, drive by the Jordan Power Building on Prince Avenue and look at the lawn. That's what I want, a whole park of the lawn. That's the goal.
Is that real? Yeah, is that grass here?
It is real.
It's always been that way.
It's always been. So I think that, that getting grass, we got some erosion areas and stuff we need to kind of take care of, the commonaires, at least has done a lot of work on the turf and really got it jammed up now. So maybe we need to start expanding now into the general areas to kind of make.
I'd also, you know, I mentioned this before and I think it's, we almost have, I think we just about have to, because I think the issue with school board and using their facilities, I hate to say it, but, you know, I have not gotten over the issue about them charging Parks and Rec for the use when we have a desire to do that to them when they use, because either they're our kids. I just don't see, you know, you pay for, people are paying taxes. But I think the issue is probably going to get worse before it gets better. And so as soon as we can come up with a way that where we can expand indoor facilities that we don't have to use their gyms, I just, I think it's going to get worse. Every time we do a road, close flowers to their property, you know, it's going to be something that, I don't care what we do, we can include them on, on, give them money, we can do whatever, but it's going to be, maybe I'm being a little too harsh, but I just see their actions. And I think whether we can add on, on our properties where we can get more gym space and as soon as the LAS side can be used, we start looking at that for playing, for, you know, our kids using it for soccer. Otherwise, it's just going to be a constant conflict. So form of a master plan update, what is that on the calendar?
That far ahead, so kind of process, we go through here, this goes to the staff retreat, they kind of look at it and make suggestions. We'll come back with kind of, by the time we vote on the strategic plan, it should have some kind of timeline in it, so everybody kind of knows when to expect. Expect when the thing will happen. Senior Senator, big KPI management as well, and then completion of the grants, additional. That move forward, good?
Good luck now.
So that was a big win for our community to get that grant. Water resources, KPI management again, Coss Creek, looking at the expansion during the pre-teen. We'll probably see something on the design firms coming up in the next couple of months and getting the design finalized and then getting pricing out to see if we can afford to do it sooner than later. And that's also tied with LAS closure. I think our group of the LAS, pretty low, but we're still some concern about shutting all the way down before we have, when the, when the cost grew. And then the TDX execution of the repair, execution of repair and replacements. Anything we missed this time?
What's under, I guess it's the, the works with, they lay tight in the T-Slot. Are we looking at what our transportation spending, any additional roads or some kind of relief for traffic in the areas, I mean, often bills, I'm a bit concerned, but that's a lot of state property, I favor. Some of the other roads leading into that, that backup because of state issues.
So that, that could tie back into T-Slot as well. So majority, as I sit here now, I would say the majority of T-Slot collections would go to road maintenance, but there will still be, have to be some money for intersection or safety improvements and then looking at that, the big long term, adding a good thing about it. I've talked to several council, two of them come in, the mayor and also a couple of councilmen about the county and the city sitting down and figuring out where to direct, how they can, how we can direct that traffic and all, coming up with a plan to go to DOT here. So everybody's got a little skin in the game and it just goes a lot smoother when you go to DOT and say, city's going to get the right way, county's going to do the design if you're willing to do the structure. All that's very long-term. Depending on what the funding source is, it's just crazy. We're trying to do this roundabouts on 53, getting federal funding instead of being able to start construction this summer, which is what I thought we should have done. The hoops you have to jump through to hit all the milestones, you know, it's, it's almost a four-year process to get the construction. So it's tough. We don't have $4 million sitting around. It's good anyways, but it's still a stack of.
Someone again, they're out there working.
Yeah. Yeah, the engineers on the way. The other thing I had to go over was the budget supplemental plan, this will be brought to us at our next meeting for discussion and adoption of our official plan. But we've kind of moved back some dates. Process still isn't to the level that I'd like for it to be as far as communication and involvement with everybody to determine. Tighten up some of the deadlines to give more opportunity to communication with department heads and amongst ourselves, talking about what was asked for and what the recommendations are, to give you opportunity to go investigate that yourself, be liable for understanding what, why that recommendation is made. So we got January 26th would be the, when the plan's submitted, that's also the date that the budget request goes out to department heads and legislative officials. The BSNA software, we got the budget modules that we used, awesome, using it last year. So it's going to be even slicker this time, understanding some capabilities there. We'll be asking for us to be returned on February 26th, that gives them a full 30 days to get back into finance. And March 1st through the 12th, recommendations to go back out to department heads, if they ask for 100 million, we'll give them 50. They'll know that within that week time span. And what we're able to do last year was when the recommendations go back, is have some time to come back in and feel saying, you know, why, what about, this is really important, I'd rather not do this than that, or make a case for getting back up to the number of requests. Then at the March 20th through April 2nd, when finance kind of starts consolidating, hopefully we have some budget numbers in, I mean, some revenue numbers in, then kind of understanding where we have a shortfall, if we've got extra money to spend. But I can tell you right now, it's probably going to be a shortfall. And then April 5th through the 16th, we have set aside a meeting to consider bringing in, go through the process, to explain the process, we're going to do a lot of the recommendations for our next time request. 16th through the 27th will be finalization, we'll have, we'll have better revenue numbers as we get closer to the budget adoption, to the amazing investments we have to do. We'll kind of understand by then what our, what our health insurance is looking on after my, so we have final. April 27th will be the draft presented, totally bottom now, to the board in a session. We're receiving public comments or any comments from commissioners, adjustments to be made up to May 4th, will be made after the document. Hopefully by May 4th, everybody's had their input and that's the final budget. We'll have May, here in our own, May 18th, June 1st is adoption of the request. Don't know that I will talk about more at the next meeting, get any ideas this year for it and get it. So I had on strategic plan, if anybody's got any questions. I say we'll have, we'll have more time before the final plan, so I think this is not our only opportunity to talk about it. This, this document, I think every department head's here this way, so I appreciate y'all coming out. I think it's very important to hear the conversations we have. If y'all got any questions, just throw them out there.
Can I ask a question about budgeting for computers? How, is, is everything going to be in the IT department or how is that spread out software and hardware for all the departments in there?
It's going to be similar to the way it's set up now. Most of that's flowed through you and then, but there are certain parameters that are looked at on whether a software is department-specific versus interdepartmentalized.
To get the assignment.
I think that's the same. We're trying to get computers similar to the fleet where IT is managed. You get a computer when you're leading a computer, keep them sized right. Nothing else on strategic plan, we do have the need of an executive session, we're just laying in that position. We get a motion. Motion, what? Motion second, on favor. All right, we need a motion to go back into regular session.
I'm making a motion to go back into regular session.
Second, on favor.
Ah.
Mr. Sax.
I'm making a motion adjourned.
Second. We are adjourned, thank you.